The legislature is back in session. Senator Rispio, you're recognized. Session, the legislature is back in session. Thank you very much. Senator Rispio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. We've concluded the discussion. Senator Underwood would like to be recognized before I make the motion to rise.
Oh, okay. Senator Underwood, you're recognized. Yeah, we're still, yeah, we're still talking since yesterday. The motion was when, to resolve into committee of the whole was to actually then have a discussion on all the bills that had the same funding source and, of course, bringing down the front office, the management and budget individuals through this legislature. So, yesterday, when we were having that discussion, I recognized both of the authors of all of the bills and that's, so therefore, it's all the bills that were discussed in the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for that explanation. And I think that, in fairness, I just want to basically request that then each member of the body have an opportunity to be able to speak on each bill individually. Granted that each bill, all the bills, had the same funding source. But each bill has, you know, has different purposes.
Yeah, point of order, Madam Speaker. I understand that the senator is exercising some caution here, but I think you've made it very clear with respect to the rules of engagement that every member would have an opportunity to speak on all seven bills that are before the committee of the whole. You've asked, when you reconvened us into this committee of the whole, you've asked if there's any senators wishing to speak on any matter before any of these bills. There was no one that raised their hand, so obviously, you recognize me to make the customary motion to rise. I was doing that, then I got a signal from Senator Underwood who said that she'd like to be given an opportunity to speak on two of the matters that are within the committee of the whole which deal with her two bills. So, I know that after Senator Underwood speaks, then Senator Blas or Senator Ada or any other senator, as you have always indicated, will have an opportunity to speak on any matter and give the opportunity before we rise. That's why I said before you allow me to, or before you ask me to make the motion to rise, Senator Underwood has indicated that she would like to address this body.
I appreciate the clarification by the majority. Thank you very much. That actually is--
And Senator, you're right, is that after Senator Underwood, I that if you wanted an opportunity to speak, because I know I'm, is that, you know, I would allow you, because I remember yesterday, I said, I didn't really set up any specific rules in terms of to guide us in this committee of the whole, but that I wanted to start off, the only rules I had was that I wanted to start off first with both of the authors and, of course, with OFB, and then therefore, had opened it to everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a minute.
All right. Thank you. Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to start off with just thanking the whole body for providing the kind of thought that is needed to address the seven bills, and in particular, Bill 182-33, which is to appropriate funds for the University of Guam to address her capital outlay projects in an amount of $250,000, and Bill 183, which appropriates funds, $500,000, to the Department of Education. Madam Speaker, this is probably one of the toughest experiences that I've gone through as a freshman senator, because, as I had noted earlier, as a chairperson of the Committee on Education, I have experienced the challenges that educators face. I know what it is like to run the organizational structure for our students who are from pre-K to 12th grade with very little or no funding. And so, I go back to why I introduced Bills 182-33 and 183-33 in the first place. I introduced these bills, I'm going to keep reiterating this, because the Department of Education had been reporting to me, even through the request of vendors, that they are not receiving the cash that had already been appropriated for them for fiscal year 2015. I received a letter as late as yesterday morning, that as of yesterday morning, they did not receive 5.9 million for various accounts, not just the TEFF, but that included the Salapi Principate and other special funds that were supposed to be released to them, 5.9 million. In addition to that, they were supposed to be given reimbursements for three other funding that they had fronted. So, right now, Madam Speaker, I am saddened. I am saddened that yesterday, it was reported that that funding source that was there, when I, when I introduced these bills, I introduced these bills knowing and I checked that there was a funding source. It was the fiscal year 2015 savings realized from the refinancing of the bond. And I grabbed, I didn't try to grab everything, I just tried to grab $250,000 for the University of Guam under 182-33, because we initially tried to provide them $1 million under our fiscal year 2016 budget, but we were informed by GIDEA that that $1 million that would help them with their accreditation process was not going to be there. So, I went back to that institution and I informed them, I said, "Okay, what is the very least that we can do?" They said, "Can you at least help us with the air conditioning unit?" Madam Speaker, I'm speaking about 182-33, which is to help the University of Guam. On November 13th of this year, that accreditation process starts, and they're going to have an off-site accreditation meeting. And you know what starts there? They will start examining the financial condition of that university. And the question that they will ask is whether, number one, they are financially stable, whether they have the necessary finances to carry out their goals, and whether they have the maintenance of effort that had been promised to them by this body, by this government of Guam. Now, we know that for decades, decades ago, the government of Guam had to support the University of Guam at almost 100%, 80%, and now, you know what? We're only supporting them 30% of their budget, because they've worked hard to get additional resources. And we have to be proud of that university. You know, Madam Speaker, we now, we have been complaining about having a brain drain in our island. But do you know that we now have our Chamorro people, our people from Guam, who are off island, had been trained and wanting to come back and work at the University of Guam, because they have branded a major, major improvement for that university? And you know how that happened? That happened because a few years ago, they were able to achieve eight years of re-accreditation, eight years, and you know what they're trying to achieve now? 10 years. Now, the report that was given to me yesterday as well by the university was that they're short $4.5 million from their fiscal year 2015 budget. And they have an MOU. Yes, there's an MOU, but you know what? It's only as good as the other party making good in that agreement. And to this morning, that agreement has yet to be fulfilled. They have a little bit of wiggle room, because MOU has noted that there that they have until December, but if we're talking about them being short right now, $4.5 million for fiscal year 2015, and they have not been receiving any additional amount even for fiscal year 2016, and we're saying, they're saying, "Can you at least give us $250,000 for air conditioning", then you know what? We are now standing to jeopardize their capacity to get accredited at that standard that they're aiming for. We have now nearly 4,000 students enrolled there. That's one of the highest enrollment that we've had in decades at the University of Guam. So, this is not about just providing favor, trying to get $250,000 so that we can make the president and all the Board of Regents happy. This is about really blocking our talk about ensuring that the institution that produces professionals who are going to be taxpayers and will be rebuilding and improving this economy would be supported. We have students there that are there just because they want, really, to make their lives better. They want to be, they may be like me, who at one time were in, they are in public assistance, but they're making their lives better. Why? Because they want to be contributing to our community. They want to be taxpayers. I would like to be able to afford the same opportunity as what was afforded to me. I would like to be able, as the rest of you, to be able to support that institution. And we're talking about $250,000, Madam Chair. And I'm not even talking about the maintenance of effort that right now is being jeopardized because we can't give them that 1 million that we had included in the fiscal year 2016 budget. So, 182-33, based on the input that was provided by Chris Duñez, the Special Assistant to the Governor, and also to Mr. Blas, the Director of Department of Administration, he said, "Well, you know what? Sorry, there's no funding." But let me tell you why I am so disturbed about that. When we held the public hearing on this bill, the only correspondence I received from the Department of Administration was that they could not support the bill because the public law that had been passed regarding the refinancing of the bonds had said that it can only go to the Guam Memorial Hospital capital improvement projects and related health projects. I said, "Okay, that's fine," but I read the law. It didn't say anything about fiscal year 2015. So, I went ahead with it. And I said, "Okay, I think I'm still okay. I'm not violating the law." And none of them said, "We need that. We need that for the tax refunds." Nobody, until the morning that we were deciding as to what bills would go forward, did we get a letter from Mr. Duñez, who is the Special Assistant to the Governor, and say, "Sorry, we've already used that money"? Not even a phone call, not even to say, "Ma'am, we're going to try to find money for the University of Guam, the $250,000." Just, "Sorry. You guys just have to, we'll work with you. We have an MOU. We'll make it happen." No, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry too, but I'm sorry for our students. I'm sorry for those hard-working professors who have just recently raked in more than $13 million, $20 million of federal grants, because they're working so hard to improve that institution. So, Madam Speaker, with relative to 182-33, I am sad. I have to take this bill and send it back to committee. Why? Because I've been told, I've been told, we've been told here by the administration, that they don't have the funds. They don't have the funds to fix the air conditioning at the University of Guam so that our students can be of comfort. So, Madam Chair, with 182-33, I'm sending this back to committee. 183-33, which is an act to appropriate the sum of $500,000 to the Department of Education for operations, this too, Madam Speaker, I'm almost speechless, and may I please drink You know, it wasn't too long ago that all of us know that Simon Sanchez was almost shut You know what happens when they're almost shut down? Most of the time, the merits, people can argue, "Well, you know what? They could have taken care of that internally. They don't need contractors to come in and fix those merits. You don't need, it's up to them. It's, they're really responsible for making sure that that building is okay, that they're, they meet the health and safety standards." But you know, Madam Speaker, they can only clean, they can only clean if they have the supplies. They can only have the supplies if they have the funding. The Department of Education right now has done major improvements over the past few The threat of closing down Simon Sanchez is probably the first in a couple of years that has happened, but that's also the same school that was shut down two years ago. So, when you short DOE, 5.9 million, additional 1.2 million of reimbursements, that is not just payroll. That's about not them not being able to pay for the contractors, for the, for the air conditioning service contracts. That's about them not being able to pay the vendors who provide the supplies and materials so that our kids have the crayons to color with, so that our kids have the books to read with, so that our students have the pencils to write with. We are now talking about a department that is building up our generation, so that hopefully they would go to the University of Guam and GCC. But once again, half a million dollars, sorry, without even giving us, giving us a solution of how this is going to be met. We're already three weeks into the fiscal year, and they too have not received that amount. In addition to that, I don't know how mu, how, I really don't know how they're surviving at this point. So, Madam Speaker, it is with great sadness again that this 183-33, $500,000, that would have helped, give them a little bit of relief, that I would have to move, to move it back into committee, because the funding is not there. I just don't, I just don't have anything else to say but to appeal to this body and to the Governor of Guam, to please, for goodness sakes, let's walk our talk about putting education first. You know, this is almost like, you know, we're a family. We go to the kitchen table. We say, "Okay, we have these priorities. We only have so much." Right? And we always in the kitchen table as a family, don't we always put our kids first? When we're in a kitchen table and there's only so much to eat, don't we want our children to eat first? And basically, what happened here is we were in a kitchen table, and there was extra food that came in, and a member of our family just decided to say, "I'm sorry, we've got to send that somewhere else where it's needed." And our kids are short of food. So, I'm asking everyone, I don't know how we're going to do this. University of Guam, 4.5 million. DOE, it's more than 6 million. And guess what? Guam Community College, as of yesterday, the president told me, "Ma'am, I have not received 6.6 million of the fiscal year 2015 budget." So, with that, I'm only going to ask my colleagues and our leaders here, even as I send these two bills back to committee, to please help us make sure that our children eat first, that we protect our children first. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator. Is there anybody else who would like to speak, ask questions? Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think that two motions are in order with regards to who wanting to send the bills back to committee.
No, I think I would make that the recommendation of the committee of the whole if we rise, if that's the desire.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that.
Right. Is there anybody else? Want to make sure first I don't miss anybody?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, the impassioned testimony from my colleague underscores something that I think we really need to come to terms with as a body, and that is the fact that when we have priorities in this government that need to be met, we can only meet them with the money that we have available. And what we choose to do with the money that we have available determines exactly what's going to get prioritized and what's going to get funded. And she is absolutely right in the figures that she stated, and in how those figures are a reflection of the priorities or lack thereof that we've set in this government. In total, in the numbers that she brought up, that's $19 million for education that they still have not received from fiscal year 2015. In deliberating the budget, it was uncovered that the Guam Memorial Hospital was also short $24 million in Medicaid reimbursements. We've all seen the headlines of an additional $15.8 million in tax refunds that still have not been paid out. And that brings us to a total cash reality, as of right now, of about $58 million in promises that were made in 2015 that have yet to be fulfilled. Now, when we passed the bill several months ago to refund these bonds, I took a very strong position, and I said, "We shouldn't be rushing out to go and spend this money, whether now or in the future, because we need to push this money back into the system. The system is short on cash." There were other opinions, different things happened, but today, what we find is that the administration, in fact, had to use that savings in order to pay tax refunds. That was what they testified to in this committee of the whole. And not surprisingly so, given the fact that we have this $58 million in education refunds and Medicaid reimbursements all waiting out there in this system. Now, as much as we would like to be the ones to appropriate for what everybody would like us to appropriate for, the reality is that our appropriations, if they exceed the cash we have available, are just not going to get fulfilled, one way or another, either in the form of, you know, a straight-up veto of the legislation so that it doesn't even materialize, or through a more subdued reality where, yeah, the appropriation's all there, it just never gets into the actual pockets of those who need it. This 4.5 million for UOG, this 6 million for DOE, this 6.6 million for GCC, all represent appropriations and commitments by this body that haven't gotten funded because the cash just isn't there. And so, while we may have said at the time that we appropriated that much, it just never, it just never arrived. Because as much as we would like to appropriate and say we're funding things and getting them done, if there's no money to do it, there's no money to do it. And so, how is this a reflection of our priorities? Well, we really need to think about, and I don't like to keep bringing it up, but we need to really think about the different things that we've committed to as a priority over the last 12 months, again, also based on information provided by the administration. Back in almost a year ago, the administration came down here and said, "We have more than enough money to pay for pay raises for elected and appointed officials." And now, fast forward, a year later, and here we are, $19 million in education that hasn't gotten into where it needs to go, $15.8 million in refunds still unpaid, $24 million in Medicaid reimbursements unpaid, and now, we're lamenting another $1.5 million in savings that could have gone to our kids who we really should be feeding first. And so, you know, going forward, Madam Speaker, I really just need to emphasize and reemphasize, as, you know, perhaps politically unpopular as it may be, that until we get our cash position to the point, or able to pay the obligations that we make and actually have those obligations funded, not just appropriated, but for the money to actually get to where it's supposed to go, we need to, we need to begin tempering our appropriation appetite. And we need to allow our cash reality to grow into our appropriation appetite. So, if the budget's going to go up next year by another 30 million, we can either rush to appropriate that 30 million, or we can acknowledge the fact that, yeah, you know what? Maybe we should stuff that 30 million back into the system so that the system can be cash-rich with the appropriations that we're going to commit to. That's what's going to allow us to pay out refunds faster. That's what's going to allow us to make vendor payments on time, and that's what's going to allow us to eventually get to a point where when we're tracking higher, we can actually say, "Hey, you know what? That's going to be available at a later date. Let's begin planning around that." But as long as our spending appet- But as long as our spending appetite is going to be such where the hope of a dollar turns into the appropriation in anticipation that that dollar's going to be there, only to come to find out that it isn't, I mean, we're just, we're just not, oh, I just feel like it's not good practice for us to be appropriating when we know that the money's not there. And so I just wanted to, I just wanted to bring all those points up, and I wanted to really praise my colleague, the retiring speaker, because, you know, as much as she would like to just have her bills go through and say that she's trying to appropriate for those purposes, the money's not there. Send it back to committee, let's see if we can try and find the money somewhere else, and let's try and get it funded. And until such time that our priorities, our cash realities, all align with our appropriation appetite, we need to really reconcile the fact that we're either going to be doing one of two things: making people wait for their payments, making people wait for their refunds, making vendors wait for their payments, or making agencies wait or never realize their actual allotments, or we need to wait and stop spending before the money comes in. But something's got to give, because it's absolutely unsustainable to continue on that dual course. It's absolutely unsustainable. And I really believe, I really believe, because there's a mentality that, you know, maybe if we, you know, that we need to do these things for various expectations that people have, but I really believe that if we're upfront with our people about what our cash positions are, and if we're upfront with them about the fact that we want to meet these priorities, and we just need to make sure the money's actually going to be there in order to meet it, and we follow through with our word when we say, yes, that's going to happen, and it actually does happen, then their expectations will shift, and it will, because we all know, I know, that, you know, a lot of people call up, and they want this, and they want that, and they want you to put everything else aside for what it is that they want. But if, if we demonstrate to our people that we are making a collective effort to meet everybody's expectations with what we have, and it's not a matter of who you know and what you know, and we're going to put you to the front of the line, and everyone else is going to wait, but if it's just one great big policy way of doing things where we, we drive our island in a direction where we're going to be able to fund everything, and everybody just needs to cooperate and work together to get to that point, then that will be a really wonderful thing, because this, the practice of, you know, I want to appropriate for this, and I want to appropriate for that, and I want, you know, this needs to be more important than everything else, that's where we get into that habit of overspending and not having enough for anything. We can come up with the next great appropriation for education, but then that's going to come at the expense of health or public safety, or vice versa. So we need to, to restore the public's trust in the notion that the spending that we're doing is actually going to result in the cash being where it needs to be. We need to restore the trust of our managers in this government, that when they're appropriated an amount, it's not going to be 4 million short, 6 million short, or 24 million short. And once everybody can begin to understand that the money that's supposed to be there is actually going to be there, as novel as that may sound, although it shouldn't sound so novel, then we're going to be able to get into a manager, get into management habits and appropriation habits that are all aligned with knowing that what we want to happen is actually going to be able to happen. But to do something in hopes that it may happen, and if it does happen, it's going to be at the expense of something else that's supposed to happen, we're not helping, we're not helping everybody, and we're not helping ourselves. So I'd like to just commend the retiring speaker, because I know that, you know, maybe politically, it's not the best thing to do, but it's definitely the most responsible thing to do. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Is there anybody else? One more time before I call Senator Esposito. Senator Agun, what, Senator Rodriguez, you want to, okay. So I have Agun then and Rodriguez. Senators, we still have two more that would like to speak that's on the list, Senator Agun and Senator Rodriguez. If you want to speak, can you please indicate by raising your hand, I'll put you on the list.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning to you and our fellow colleagues. Madam Speaker, I understand that perhaps there's a philosophical or a principled approach difference or divide here between the availability of cash, the use of the cash for tax refunds, as the Governor has every right to do, to give the money and the tax refunds back to our people. But I'm, I'm going to request the body to consider pressing on with this piece of legislation and place it under third reading, and I certainly hope that I can have sufficient votes to be able to get it passed. Because, you know, Madam Speaker, this government is, yes, there are outstanding obligations, and we heard commitments from the administration officials yesterday who were under oath that they will meet those commitments. And I anticipate that over the course of the next several months, that those commitments will continue to be chipped away, because the question is, at the end of the day, is UOG going to receive the $6 million that is due? Is DOE going to receive whatever amount that it is due out of fiscal year 15? And we heard that the commitments were being provided yesterday in response to questions that were asked to the executive branch officials. I'm just going to put out a plea, first of all, to our colleagues to consider supporting the initiatives that are put forward, because it really comes back to our community requesting these items. And, and I cannot stress it enough, if we're not here to provide funding support for the construction, a $25,000 appropriation for the construction of a fallen heroes monument, then I ask the question to myself, then why am I here? If we're not here to repair a gymnasium that was destroyed or damaged two months ago, then why am I here? If in fact, an opportunity presents itself to find the funds. If I'm not here to repair a bridge where already a few bricks have been identified to have fallen, that could have conceivably, maybe what should, may, may have happened is if it had hit somebody, then that would be an issue that we'll all be running to to try to address from an emergency perspective. If weren't, then, if we're not here to provide that funding support, then I ask myself the question, then why am I here? If we're not here to provide $150,000 for community projects and facilities that the Mayor of Sinojanya has asked, so that he can save thousands and thousands of additional dollars, rather than coming back a year or two years from now, to be able to provide that funding based on his request, if I'm not here to try to identify funds and provide that support, then my question is, why am I here? Because these are all community projects that would ultimately benefit our people. My final plea, Madam Speaker, is, in addition to requesting consideration of our colleagues, is I'm asking the Governor, because this is a matter of philosophy, maybe not a matter of principle, because my perspective of any additional revenues that's received, this body rightfully should appropriate that. The cash the Governor can use for payment of tax refunds, and that's exactly what he said, he did, he used the cash. But the spending authorization, that cash, in my opinion, should be reimbursed so that this body can appropriately appropriate that. So I'm asking the Governor, should I muster up sufficient votes for the passage of these pieces of legislation that would address community issues that he has identified in the past to have endorsed by virtue of the legislation that he sent down on July 30th, I'm asking the Governor to please work with your administration, identify the $580,000 that is requested, should it pass muster from this body, and give our people what they want and what they have requested, either through their mayors or through their spouses of our fallen heroes. I ask the Governor for that consideration. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you very much to you, Madam Speaker. You know, I wasn't going to say, say anything, you know, regarding this whole issue, but I think I would, I would not be doing any justice to even, to even our body here, because the, the, really the driving force of all of this comes from a law that we had passed here. It wasn't unanimous, but we did pass it, Public Law 3360. And, you know, I, I support all the initiatives that the author of this piece, of all these legislations would like to fund and would like to, to, to get done. But I think, you know, this is something that we need to all be honest to ourselves. And, and, you know, the truth of the matter is, is that we wouldn't be here today had we appropriated the savings that we all know was there. There was a 1.5, 1.7 million dollar savings we knew if we were to refund the 2007 and 2009 bonds. But it was met with, with great resistance. And so, you know, I, I know the Governor, I, I trust the Governor, administration want to do these projects too. But unfortunately, when we passed 3360, we said from 2016, and, and Senator Duñez was right yesterday, we knew there was no saving in 2016, it was from 2017 and onwards where we would see significant savings. We would have seen greater savings had we, had we acted as a body on that measure even earlier. But that's now water under the bridge, and we didn't. So we lost revenues there. So when we talk about, we want to be able to look at the priorities and fund these different priorities of our community, we need to look at ways to, to bring in the revenues, look at ways that we could save, save our government some money. So let this be a lesson that, you know, we really need, you know, we really need to learn that we can't always be about not trusting, or not, and, and so, sure, you know, we say we need to trust but verify, but during the discussions of, of, of when we passed Public Law 3360, the facts and information were in front of us. And, and the administration has said it, had there been an appropriation, we wouldn't be here today. Senator Agun was, he, all these, these measures that he wants us to fund now, were all part of that, of that measure. But Madam Speaker, the fact of the matter is, we missed the boat. And we've expended so much energy and time these past two days on, on this measure, with the administration telling us, look, the money was used for another priority. And we can't fault them for that. But you know what, I'm still going to support, I'm still going to support this, this measures. I'm, I'm going to join Senator Agun in his plea that we, if we do get this passed here, that the administration, the Governor, find a way to, to make these projects move forward.
One moment. Somebody please verify whether, is that, is that a testing, or is that something that's real? Can somebody, we're going to take a brief recess, I'm so sorry, Senator. The legislature's back in session. I apologize for the brief interruption, but everything is safe and sound on the island of Guam, so we will continue to do the business of the legislature. So Senator Rodriguez, you may continue.
Great, thank you very much, Madam Chair. And so, really, just, just to close out, you know, we're here, we've been here for the past few days in dealing with measures that really could have been dealt with early on this year. And so, it's clear, we've, we've missed the boat, you know, but that's water under the bridge now, but we can learn from that. And, and so, you know, I'm, I'm going to join in supporting these, these measures as it moves forward, and even the other two measures that Senator Underwood, if she does move it forward, that, you know, we would support it, I would support it, because I, you know, I believe these, these are important priorities that even the administration shares, and we've heard it from Senator Duñez earlier and from Senator Blas, that these are matters that, that they support and realize that need to be moved forward. So, again, Madam Speaker, let this be, let this be a lesson for us, that, you know, this exercise we've done has taken so much energy and so much time, and is something that we could have addressed early on, had we not gone to extremes of even going to the Attorney General and deeming and saying that the measure we passed here, because it included use of these proceeds as illegal, which clearly she came back and says was not illegal. So again, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator. Senator McCready, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I wasn't also, as the retiring speaker said, I wasn't going to say much or anything today, but since, since he brought up some of the, the issues that I agree with him on, I, I just want to kind of expand on those, and, and it's right, when we were in committee as a whole yesterday, I stated that I didn't think we, we should have been here. We, this is something that, that this legislature had control of. We are the appropriators, we pay the bills of the government, and we didn't appropriate it, we did not appropriate the money. And the Governor used the money to pay tax refunds. We can't fault him for that, because we mandate that he pay the tax refunds. We went to court to mandate that he pay tax refunds, and he's paying it. And if he didn't pay it, we would jump all over him. And when I say we, I don't mean all of us, there's some people in here that will jump all over the Governor. But he's paying the tax refunds, he's paying those obligations. But I'm not going to sit here and just, just defend the Governor, because he can do that, and he did that yesterday with his, with, with his, with his directors and his, Senator Duñez. I didn't once hear the Governor's people say that any bill should go back to committee, or any bill was dead. I heard, unless I missed anything, I did step away for a little while, but I, I heard that the Governor was willing to work with this body. So we keep going back and forth, pointing the finger, really getting nowhere. You know, there was an argument earlier this year, that we lost $30 million in savings because, because a bill wasn't heard and passed into law. You know, that, that's $30 million that we could have saved, that we didn't You know, that, that's $30 million that we could have saved, that we didn't realize. There is an argument there, but you don't hear the governor coming out, or the governor's people coming out and saying, hey, you know, we lost $30 million, an opportunity to, to lose $30 million, now we're here because we lost $1.7 million. Next week, we're going to here because we lost another amount of money. It just keeps going and going and going, and never ends. So should we be here? It's our jobs to be here, but did we address, should we have addressed this in the last session, that we had the opportunity to do? Absolutely. These, these appropriations were ours to lose, and we lost it. The good senator who introduced these bills, he compromised. And that compromise is, is, I wouldn't say haunting us right now, but that compromise has brought us to this point. And, and so you, you have to ask yourself, Madam Chair, is, do we learn from this, or do we continue to do the same thing over and over and over again? Because if we don't learn from it, we keep doing the same thing over and again, we're going to kind of get, we're going to get the same results. Blame each other, point the finger. Like I said, I said this two years ago, the governor's a mile and a half away, walk up there and talk to him and work with him. That's all we have to do. I know it sounds a lot easier than it is, but it's still, he's still right next door. And his people came in here yesterday and did not say to send any bill back to committee. They could have, they could have come here and said, these bills, we don't have money for these bills, send them back to committee. They didn't. They said, we don't have money for these bills right now, but work with us, we'll work with you. Let's move these things through. I totally, 100% agree with Senator Underwood. She made a compelling argument today. I may not necessarily agree with sending those bills back to committee, because the governor was here saying, let's work together, let's just work together, let's find out where that middle, middle compromises to get the solutions, to get that substance, that we need. The governor came here himself with his people, said, let's work together, let's do it. But we keep making these same mistakes over and over again, and there's that, that alarm.
I, I hope it's not, I hope it's not somebody's phone.
So I, you know, I agree with Senator Rodriguez, that the good author of both these bills have extreme amounts of importance and merit. And any given Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, any given day of the week, we vote yes on these bills.
Okay, Sergeant, yeah, it's getting serious, because it's, uh...
We can...
Okay, so, Senator...
You know, that's, that's, I'll end it there, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator. I, I just want to make sure though, because although you're right, Mr. Duñez said, is one, there is no money, the money had been used already. Two, he said he would like to work with the legislature.
Yes.
Three, he did say, because a question was asked, is that then, will, if we pass it, will the governor sign it into law? And he said, no, he can't. So that means there, they will still be...
I think he used the word lapse.
No.
Correct?
He said that he will not be signed, so...
I also asked you...
I'm sorry, Senator, yes?
I also specifically asked if they would find a funding source for the two bills. I did, and they said...
And then I, I, it was my understanding that, that they never shut the door, they left the door open to work together. Is it...
Okay.
Is that, is that my understanding? That's my understanding, that the governor, the governor's people came here and they didn't shut the door on us and say, there's no money...
Because they said they would like to work with us. By the way, just, I, we just, Sergeant Arms checked with Homeland Security, and they said they are testing all of the alarm systems throughout the island, so they'll be doing this from time to time, so we should be hearing it all day.
Well, it's a good thing that it works.
Yeah, to make sure that they work for emergencies. He did also, did say that when we realize additional money is coming in, and he basically said, probably on the second quarter, and by that time, he's hoping then that there will be that realization of additional monies coming in, and that they would like to then submit, you know, a budget.
So is, so is, my understanding is, is correct, then, the governor, the governor did not shut the door to say, send these bills to committee, or, or he was not going to...
No, he, he...
He wouldn't, he wouldn't sign the bill if we just sent the bill to the third reading file, voted on, and sent to him.
He would not, meaning...
Now, if we worked with him to find a solution to a funding source for both these bills, then that would change the, the, the climate of his mindset of not signing the bill, correct?
No. What it is, is that in the realization of the additional monies coming in, that then, when the bill gets set down, sent down, that then these projects, you know, are definitely, could be very well be a part of that 37 million. He was even quoted saying that today in the papers, that for now, with the budget that he has, he's limited, he has asked everyone to stay within the budget, but however...
But rightfully so, Madam Speaker, we're three weeks into the fiscal year, so we, we really don't have strong projections that we can say the numbers are holding up to what he said they would hold up to, so...
I'm sorry, but Chris basically said that it'll be the second quarter.
Second quarter?
That's what he said.
Okay, so, that's what I'm saying.
Second quarter is next year, next April.
Obviously, obviously, the, the previous speaker, Senator Underwood, you needed, you needed clarification immediately. So, so I, so, there's the reason for sending it back to committee.
First of November, third of November, December. But he said, no, March. You're right, so he said by April, that's what he said at the end.
You want the money appropriated right away.
He said April. The second quarter is...
Okay, well, that's, I mean, that might, see, the understanding that I had, Madam Speaker, was that the governor was willing to work with us.
Yes.
And, and, and so, you know, when, when you have the governor sending his people down, telling the legislature, let's work together and find a solution, maybe the solution isn't next week or next month, but if there is a solution down the road, that the governor's willing to work with us, and 15 people can get around and, and vote yes on this bill, or these bills, and the governor will then sign it into law, not let it lapse or veto it, then why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we trust the governor?
But they, but Mr...
And go down that route? Why are we such...
But Mr. Duñez already said that he will not sign it.
He will not, see, and that, that goes back to the misunderstanding, because what my understanding, Madam Speaker, is he will not sign a bill, and I'm not saying that that he said, because I might have been out when, when he said that.
Sorry, he was sitting right next to me, and that's what I heard.
But, but he, it's my understanding that he will not sign a bill that is sent to him without working with him to find a funding source. Because the governor, what I heard yesterday, would be accused by the legislature of deficit spending. The governor has said that there is no money. How is he going to spend money if there is no money?
Just point of information, Madam Speaker.
And that's coming from the governor's office, just to clarify.
Please state your point of information.
Um, yes, Senator McCready is right, the governor did say that he will not sign this, these bills unless we work with him to find an alternative funding source, which is why Senator Underwood sending the bills back to committee is the right, is the appropriate action for that, because then in committee, we can amend the bills based on the funding source that the governor is able to work with the legislature in identifying. If we vote on these bills status quo and send it to him, with the, with the status quo funding sources on them right now, he did indicate via his representative, Senator Chris Duñez, that he will not sign those bills. So if we want to, in the spirit of working with the governor to find the funding for these very important projects, actually allow for them to happen, we actually should send them back to committee, so that when the funding source becomes identified in the second quarter of the fiscal year, we can then amend the bills to tag that particular funding source, fund these projects, and get them going when the money's available.
That was my...
Thank you. Well, Madam Speaker, can I just follow up on that? And he said a, he said a, a, a word that, that stick into my head, if we want to work with the governor, I think we have to work with the governor. You know, that's the first thing, we have to and we should work with the governor. The second thing is, it's a prerogative of the author to send the bill back to committee.
Absolutely.
His or hers?
Yes.
I am just saying that the governor came in here yesterday through his people and offered his 100% support for all these measures, without getting the blame for deficit spending, to make it public that he used the 1.7 million dollars that we did not appropriate, that we should have, to pay tax refunds, that we hold his feet to the fire for. He did what we should have done, and we asked him to do. We should have appropriated money, and we asked him to pay tax refunds, he did it. So, that's all I'm saying, Madam Speaker. My understanding is, the governor said, let's work together. We either say, yes, we're going to work with you, or we're going to say, no, we're not going to work with you. That's, that's it, that's simple, it's black and white.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else before I call Senator Esposito? Anybody else? Senator Esposito, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Having discussed, having all this discussion and closing on the matter of the seven items that were put from the second reading file into the committee of the whole, I move that we rise from the committee of the whole with bills 140, 153, 154, 155, 156, and 157, that these bills be reported back to the, to the legislature, having met the requirement of our standing rules that these appropriation measures go through the committee of the whole, with no changes made to these bills. However, with respect to bills 182 and 183, based on the authors of, the author of these bills, her, Senator Underwood's recommendation is that the committee of the whole send this bill back to the committee of jurisdiction, which is the committee of appropriations. So that's my motion, that we, we rise with those recommendations, and that these, yeah, and to place the other five bills would go to the third reading file, and then the other two bills, namely 182-33 and 183-33, will return back to the committee on appropriations.
On that motion, hearing objections. So, senators, I know we're only 10 minutes away, we're going to recess until 2 o'clock this afternoon.